Our lost loved ones here in our community. Again, we come to you and just thank you for your blessings and your love and your kindness. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Eglin.
Here.
All right, next, we're gonna do, bring Rob Bailey. Robert Bailey III is that official title?
This is a student's year.
So we're gonna go to Oval Office and meet you from front here, Rob.
Close to the campus, right?
All right, left handle of the Bible, you gonna hold that for me? Right hand up. I, Robert Bailey.
I, Robert Bailey.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I shall support the Constitution.
That I shall support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the ordinance of the Village of Hicksville.
And the ordinance of the Village of Hicksville.
I shall not be influenced by.
Shall not be influenced by.
Any consideration except.
Any consideration except.
That of merit and fitness.
That of merit and fitness.
Any appointment or discharge.
Appointment and discharge.
Of employees.
Of employees.
I shall not make.
Shall not make.
Or authorize the expenditure.
Or authorize the expenditure.
Of public money.
Of public money.
Except for the consideration.
Except for the consideration.
An efficient service to the village.
An efficient service to the village.
I shall faithfully.
I shall faithfully.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge the duties of.
Discharge the duties of.
A member of the council for the Village of Hicksville.
A member of the council of Village of Hicksville.
Defiance County, Ohio.
Defiance County, Ohio.
For the term ending December 31st.
The term ending December 31st.
2025.
2025.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Great. Congratulations. All right. All right, thank you, thank you. Talked to John Hager today. He is not planning on being here tonight to discuss some property. Maybe come at another later meeting, so pass that along. We have approval of the January 15th rather early council meeting minutes.
Any motion to approve is written.
Second.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Got a bill listed in front of you. Have any questions, concerns?
I do. Says pool filter 2751-93. You paid to have that filled?
It's not filled. Nope, that was about 203 tons worth of dirt brought in, so we pulled the plug on filling it. I reached out to some excavating companies to bring us some dirt when they get something to fill it in. And then whatever we get during this splash pad project.
Exactly, yeah. How about Truland equipment for 6889? What, that had to be that little K skid steer, huh?
Um, the skid steer was the 329E that we have on the street department. It had some issue where it didn't rip up. Ended up being some type of sensor that was almost $500. We had about $785 in labor on it. But a good portion of that money was $5,288 for a new plow for the 450.
Plow for the 450.
We replaced the plow.
On a dump truck?
Yeah.
You got a dump truck from, from Truland?
No. It was the 2022, that 450 that we got. It's got the stainless bed on it. We put a heavier plow on it.
Okay.
So that was, the price of that new plow was $5,288.
And that's involved in the 6889?
Yes.
So you got a plow from Truland?
Yeah, not a truck, a plow.
Truck, yeah.
And not for the skid steer.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So it's, it's a combination of some invoices. That was the one that they had 16 or 1800 dollars two years in a row, or two or three years. That's about a pair of hundred dollars for a repair.
Okay, that's all I got. Think I must have your bills?
Second. I'll second that.
Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yeah.
Martin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Eglin.
Any boards commission updates? Uh, council committee reports? I believe you have a PFE one in here.
Yes. You guys have in your packet the notes from the PFE meeting. It was pretty lengthy, about two hours. We got a lot discussed during that time. Bruce, unfortunately, he's not able to be here tonight because of his work schedule, because there are five Mondays in January. It flipped, so he's opposite of, of the council schedule now. He did give us a pretty nice write-up of some different ideas and plans that he has. Anyone that would like to see this, I have this copy. This is mine. It's got some notes in it, but you guys are more than welcome to look at it. Um, he proposed some pretty big numbers and some pretty big ideas. He initially asked for eight part-time employees. Obviously, eight part-time employees may not be in the budget right now, and we have some other things that we have to discuss, including billing and what that'll look like. Just a personal opinion, though. We asked them to do a contingency plan. They did it. We asked them to select someone to help run the EMS. They did it. We asked them to work on their protocols. They're 50% of the way through those protocols. I just think as a council, we need to figure out a way to help that committee and support them so that they can continue to thrive. He has some pretty good ideas on helping to generate money, and if you understand the EMS, it doesn't really generate money, so he's kind of found some ways through transport of how we can do that. I was able to have a conversation with him and asked him, bottom line, how many employees would you need to get transporting up and running? Because that's basically how we're gonna end up generating some money for that department. He felt like two part-time paramedics is what he would need to get started. So I really would like us to have some conversation about that in the near future about allowing that to happen. We also need to maybe discuss the idea of coming up with a formal job position. I know he's kind of been selected into this role as a coordinator is what they're calling it, but there really is a need for maybe a full-time coordinator position, and we need to discuss what that looks like in terms of budget and numbers and title. Yeah, I don't know if you guys have any questions. Also, one of the things discussed in here was an outside billing company. The date in the packet is February 20th. However, the lady out of Cleveland is able to come next Monday. I would like for us to have a special council meeting next Monday so that we can have her come in and she can talk to us. She has been in contact with Abby Franz and has told Abby, kind of let her to believe, that she could get us up and running within 30 days. She will be able to go back through all of the books, kind of figure out where some of our deficits are, and get us up and running again. I just think that we have not done any billing since December, and that is something that we need to get going on. I'm not sure how that goes about getting that scheduled, but if, I would, I would really like to get her sooner, here sooner than later.
Right. I was planning on scheduling a special council meeting for the 12th, since she was able to move it up a week. Spoke to several people about that, so I'd like to see that happen.
Why, just a couple of things on that. Where'd that $300,000 come from for transports? Is that a year? Really?
So that, that's the way that they make their money. So this is projected income. This is not actual numbers.
Well, how many people are they transporting to make 300,000 in a year?
I will say, so I'll pass this along to you. Take a look at it or contact Bruce. He does a much better job explaining it than I do. He was actually in talks with CMH, Benny from that CMH, about how many patients they had transferred out. So he got his numbers, and it's a mileage fee, and based on whether it's BSL or ASL, so that's the severity of the patient, they get a higher or lower mileage fee. So he was basing those numbers off of numbers that he got specifically from CMH.
Okay, and on that plan, is that if the hospital stays open?
Yes.
But didn't we ask Bruce to come up with something for the closing?
Yes, yes. It's all in here.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it is. He did.
Because we've been waiting on that.
Yep.
How many pages is that?
I don't know.
No, you didn't know.
I would say it's probably a small willow tree, maybe.
Why didn't it scan person?
We could, yeah, we could, or I can even ask Bruce if we can get an email to you. Honestly, if you have a chance.
Because I don't want to take the whole thing.
If you have a chance to sit down and talk to him, he went page by page and explained it to us, and that's really the best way to get that. And he may be able to come maybe next Monday.
Yeah, I'll have to check us the schedule and everything.
Yeah, that might work out that he could possibly come. Hearing the presentation from him is significantly better than hearing it from me.
Yeah, because some of the numbers get spunked a little bit.
They're projected numbers.
Very high.
Yeah. It, I mean, I'm sure it's a bit wishful thinking, and it's based on having paramedics hired. Um, and you know, paramedics cost a little bit more for the village to pay their income, so we're gonna have to figure that out.
But didn't he get those, didn't he get his transport numbers from the hospital or something?
Yes, he got the amount of transfers from the hospital, and then I think the number of reimbursement he got right from Medicare and Medicaid website, and he's been in talks with them as well.
Because, you know, they're waiting on transports all the time. The spirit.
Well, I guess it seemed like a lot of money for.
So.
Well, was I opening the amount of money that's been sitting there that we could potentially have captured over the years?
We talked about this a long time ago, about doing transports, and things fell through. Not from our end, but we had, I mean, lined up to do the transfers and sent it to paramedic school. Things fell through on their end, and we weren't able to do that.
It's been a topic for most of my time up here. One, one thing that you, everybody just got this sheet. You can take that 250K ambulance off of there because we found out what was wrong. I didn't find out, but people found out what was wrong with that ambulance that's over there, and it's been fixed, and there's nothing wrong with it. So that 250 is no longer in play.
Well, and that 208,000 for the employee, that's eight part-time paramedics. So also that number is high in terms of coming to the table scaled back a little bit and maybe just looking at two part-time paramedics.
Yeah, that's based on 24 hours a week.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, maybe Bruce, does he feel confident you can find part-time paramedics, or we can't find basic PMT people?
He said he had two that night. That would have willing to come work.
I'm assuming it's probably some people that he worked, he works with now.
And it was based on it being part-time, so they can have other jobs. It was people who were basically just willing to pick up extra shifts, kind of make extra money on the side.
I thought we were considering about 32 hours, 24 hours.
Well, they were gonna do 24-hour shifts, so it had to stay under 32 hours.
So they don't have.
Although, didn't you say 29 hours?
29 is what the, you have to average, so it has to average out at the end of the year for the benefits and the insurance. It has to average out at 29 hours or less.
Okay.
All right, so in other words, if you have someone, you know, I would do this insurance, I would have them, like, I might have them work, uh, three days, one week, and may not use them for two weeks, you know? And then I could work that more in that week because I'm still gonna average out at the end of the year.
To the 29.
For the 29 hours.
Okay.
That's where the, the insurance thing kicks in, whether you have to pay the insurance or you don't, so.
And then it'll really kind of take some time for the coordinator to figure that out and make sure they stay within that number.
I think for a preliminary report that he had given us was different options. I think he did a good job.
Yeah.
Overall with the different ways of kind of pulling things together, depending on situations with the hospital and our staffing and everything, so definitely discuss a lot further.
Yeah.
I think the sunshine down the road is, is in the February 12th meeting that woman. I mean, the things that she tells that she can do, and she can do it all in 30 days. You can make that, right?
Anybody else have any questions for?
I just had one. I see towards the end, the results of the investigation were emailed. Are we gonna be, the rest of the council members gonna know what the investigation showed, or? I mean, I'm on personnel, so I'm kind of curious.
I, I'll just.
I'm the chairman of it, so I was kind of curious.
I kept it with police, fire, and EMS just due to family connections with, with certain people on council and administration.
Right. But there's other employees that are not family that were also on that list too, so I was just kind of curious where we stood with it.
Yeah, we had the investigation, Rachel, and dealt with it and had a direction with it, so that's where we stood at the present time, so. But if we needed, if we need to talk any farther about due to personality, you know, issues, we kept it going executive, so.
Okay.
Really a matter of public record, though, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, because I'd like to talk to, talk into a little further, I guess, because the things that happened to cause EMS to be down, I don't want them to happen again, and if we don't know what's caused it, kind of hard to correct your own.
Like I said, with, we talked quite a bit. I mean, we've got a lot of discussion on the table and with the direction of what we, they went, and we would, I would advise going into executive session for it, so. Any other questions? Next, we have administrator's report.
Uh, on Wednesday, January 17th, we had another service lane break up to 110 Middle Lane. It's the first time for that address, but that's eight of them out there since 2021. Friday, the 27th, we had a water main break at 400 block of Elm Street, which is right across from the recycling lot. Took a few hours to remedy that situation. I am in the process of writing a grant, a CDBG grant. This will be for the year 2025 to potentially replace that water main on Elm Street. That would go from Usoagon to Cornelia Street. Uh, we did have a splash pad pre-construction meeting with myself and the engineers, Nagel, and the Hicksville Community Foundation. The foundation is currently in the process of picking out the fixtures for the splash pad and the colors of the fixtures for the splash pad. We are projected to go to construction at the very beginning of April, and as of now, the project is scheduled for completion on August 1st. Spoke with Rachel, and she is putting together, I did put together a, an agreement, a payment schedule agreement that would be between the village and the foundation. We have also discovered a lot of infiltration, a lot of clear water coming in from the Haven Drive area. Actually, there's quite a bit of it. Haven Drive Lift Station, since we've had snow and ice melt off and some rain, that thing is running a lot more than what Defiance Avenue was running. So the Joel and Josh have been out cammering the laterals. There's six-inch lines that go into the manholes out there, then they split off into two four-inches going to the homes. And Joel's got more information on all this, and he'll, he can address you guys as well. But we're finding a lot of, a lot of water coming in from those, and we don't know if the laterals have come apart like we have found in the past, or if there's something tied into it. But we are getting a lot of water in the sanitary from that. We are also having, it's mainly two addresses, and I won't put it out there, where we're getting a lot of grease in the sanitary lines. Uh, we have cleaned out one of them ourselves, and one of the businesses has hired a company to clean out the grease residue that was backing them up from another business. But I just want to remind people that there is an ordinance for that as well, and if a person is potentially charged with that, they can be charged with a misdemeanor and fined up to $1,000 per offense for dumping grease down into the sanitary system. Other than that, that's all I got. I did send an email to the.
Yeah, I got it down here.
Together to.
Schedule something I have about the zoning inspector position if this Mike's gonna be retiring, so. So that'll happen after this meeting.
Maybe we should go into executive session at the end of this and talk about a few things.
Anything else for Cory? Got a solicitor report, Rachel.
Couple here. Um, second reading of ordinance 2023-19 by caption only to amend the annual appropriations ordinance and declaring an emergency.
Vote to suspend the rules.
Guess what? What are the changes? Well, how come for all the proposed changes?
Because I couldn't finish out the fire EMS payroll for the end of 2023 without doing this. I had to increase their revenue, and then I have to do an appropriation of ordinance just to close out 2023. That's why December's still open.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
That's to suspend, yeah.
Second.
Final reading.
No, that was second read, so third one.
So do third and final. Third and final reading of ordinance 2023-19 by caption only to amend the appropriations and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Bailey.
Yes.
We have a first reading of ordinance 2024-04 by caption only authorizing fiscal officer to transfer funds and declaring an emergency.
I'm assuming the $500,000 for the splash pad, capital projects, or is that for, I know we have paid some money, possibly got front on that one?
Yeah.
Is that what that's for, or is that?
Yeah, that's what it's for.
Okay.
And that one is not technically an emergency, of course, but the 50 to go into police and fire definitely is because we're already in negative.
You're working on the payment repayment plan on, I don't know, there's some concerns on getting the money, and they, Splashpad Committee said that they were gonna give 800,000 and right, haven't given it over yet, so.
Thank you, Cory. I sent in an agreement that I proofed or wrote up yesterday.
I move, suspend the rules.
I'll second. Roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2024-04 by caption only authorizing fiscal officer to transfer funds and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
Second reading of resolution 2024-02 by caption only to enter a contract with Choice One Engineering for the Meadow Lane and Beverly Dry Water Service Replacement Project and declaring an emergency.
Any idea why that's so high, Cory? I mean, there's, they're gonna replace water service, so they know each house has one. I mean, there's not a lot of engineering that really goes into something like that.
No, I think 6,000, 4,000, I think, is their base, is their base piece.
I see several of the other ones were 44.
Yeah, 44.
And, and those seem like they would contain more paperwork than, than these others. This one, I just wondered why it was so high. I hope, I hope they're not gonna turn into another, uh, engineering firm that used to do a lot of workforce.
I can send you the break. Motion, I want to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
Third and final reading of resolution 2024-03 by caption only to enter a contract with Choice One Engineering for the Meadow Lane and Beverly Dry Water Service Replacement Project and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Eglin.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
First reading of resolution 2024-03 by caption only to enter a contract with Choice One Engineering for the valve replacement project and declaring an emergency.
I want to suspend the rules.
Why are these emergencies? I want them given, I want to get them bid out and get them done. I'll second.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Martin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Second and final reading of resolution 2024-03 by caption only to enter a contract with Choice One, Choice One Engineering for the valve replacement project and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Bailey.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
First reading of resolution 2024-04 by caption only to enter a contract with Choice One Engineering for the water tower demolition project and declaring an emergency.
I want to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Martin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Second and final reading of resolution 2024-04 by caption only to enter a contract with Choice One Engineering for the water tower demolition project and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
Eglin.
Yes.
Yeah, good job. Thank you, everybody. Next on the agenda is department heads. Chief Danning, you have anything?
We should have stats for January stats for cases and calls to service. The other thing is request for executive session for personnel, for additional personnel, basically to finalize the K9 program. And I think, uh, our new car, new Durango, I found out last week, hasn't been, um, went to the production line, yep. Uh, so it's scheduled not to go to the production line at least till March. So, so we probably won't see it to at least end of April, May, so.
Will that be K9 ready?
That, we're, uh, the 2021 vehicle is what we're gonna put the K9 in.
It can be, like, retrofitted for that?
Yeah, we just gotta order Ken, so, uh, I can talk about this on executive, but, uh, yeah, we're gonna put it in the 2021. We can't get it, uh, because I'll put those classes coming up. Director's not gonna be here anyways, but I plan on using it in 2021.
Okay.
So, but that's all I've got.
Any questions for the chief? We're good. Thank you. We're good, thank you. Chief Hart.
511, we had trouble with it. That was our second squad we have. We repaired that, it was a short, we did that in-house, so we saved a little money that way. Also, last weekend, a hospital was on a diversion, so any calls we had was going someplace else. We did have one call transferred to Fort Wayne, so if you're looking at it, it's a little more bucks than what we transferred out here to Hicksville. Things went well, it was like over and back, they were back in about two hours, so did a nice job on that. Not all of them are gonna be that way, but.
You only had one run?
We had.
Over the weekend?
Yeah, we only had one run, yeah. So we were lucky this weekend, I mean, not having to take it out of town and have a second call and all that sort of stuff, so. That's all I have right at the moment. Any questions?
Hundred foot ladder truck, did you find out if it's NFP A certified?
I couldn't find anything. I couldn't find anything, there's nothing in the files stating it is.
You have to have an inspected yearly?
Yeah, we're gonna have to, if we wanna keep it.
You've gotta use it, yeah.
Yeah, so, I'll get on that.
It has to be certified even sitting in that building, probably, seriously.
Yeah, it's an asset for us to have it, so.
If you can legally use it.
Oh yeah, you know, we just, you know, we can't take it out of the country because that'll suck more water than, than what we can have at the point on time, so we don't take it out of town.
I, I know you have a lot of things going on over there Bruce, but I would kinda make that a priority and get some phone calls made and get somebody to come over here to see if we can, if it's even possible to certify the thing.
Yeah, I agree, and I'm gonna check in on all the other ladders also, so.
Is it a one-time certification or?
Yearly, yearly tested, yeah. If it can't be certified, then they can't use it whether it's in town around the country, they shouldn't be using it at all.
We can back them down, like the pump test, if it don't beat the 1,000 gallon a minute, we can back it down to 7,000, but that hurts our, that hurts our insurance rates, so.
The main thing that's gonna be certified on that unit?
Is the ladder.
Is the ladder. Yeah, that's, that's the main thing they're gonna look at.
So, I'll work on that.
There's, there's companies in Fort Wayne that do that.
Good, because I don't know where to go with it, honestly, I don't. Down in Finlay, I suppose we could go, but that's another day's ride. We get Fort Wayne, that's better off, we are.
I'll be with you tomorrow, give you some numbers in Fort Wayne, trucking companies that do it, trucking, truck repair shops that do it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Anything else?
Question for chief? Thank you, chief. Parks Department here today, but hey, Joel's here from, you know, updates, Joel?
Yeah, yeah. I can come off with Cory just with you guys about.
About this.
Yeah, yeah. About Haver Drive. We did a lot of camera work this past week, we've had a lot of rain, a lot of snow melt. This past month, we had roughly three and a half inches of rain, just in eight days, we had two inches of rain and total precipitation, so not only did we have two to three inches of snow, but we had also the two inches of rain. Ground is super saturated, so it takes a long time to go, go away. And like Cory said, Haver, it was up 250% on its normal runtime, over its normal runtime. It usually runs about an hour a day, it's running, right now, even after we left all the rain, it's about two hours a day, double. Back at its peak, it was running about two and a half times its normal runtime, at about 350%. So, all the other stations were up, the only one that was excluded was Industrial, it was so minimal, you couldn't see a difference when it came to the actual rain and INI. Trident, we found an issue with Trident, we're gonna take care of her soon. With all the snow melt and the rain, it was getting back down into our valve pit and the engineer put a hole in the bottom during back into the lift station, so all that melt just added so many hours to the rundown of those pumps. So we're gonna fix that here fairly quick, make sure that doesn't happen, especially with the fan press coming online here soon, I don't know when they're supposed to come on, I thought they were gonna come online in January, but apparently not, but that's all the way across the board, Yoder's up, Hillbrook's up, Defiance Avenue, Haver even ran longer than Defiance. Out on Haver, we found at least three direct sources of water, we can only feed the push camera up so many lines, we found one on an empty lot, and I'm gonna leave the other two residences unnamed for right now, we'll still do the research, what we can, what we can find, but manholes all the way through town, just possible sources, trying to find other sources. Long term would be more, just like rain meters, put rain meters in all through town, check lows before and after rain, just direct sources, keep removing them, so. On that note, you guys have any questions?
Are we staying down so that we're not bypassing down at the plant?
Right now, we are not, so we're good, we have. So all those are always reported to Defiance Health Department and to EPA whenever that happens. We get to a certain point, we do bypass, it's not on, on every one of them. 003, 004, 006, those are our three main ones. 004, I'm sorry, 3 is our main bypass or our CSO location, it does happen, we're trying to eliminate that, but we have to reduce a lot more INI, reduce a lot more sources of direct inflow that are getting into our sanitary, or else it won't, it won't go away. But every year, we make strides to remove as much as we can, so.
It's on 3, is that, that's in the old tile, right?
That's the main one that comes into the plant. Big, big line.
Thank you, Joel, appreciate it.
And I have a few more things, you told me to put together a list for 2024, just the project list, what we plan on doing. So we have, currently, I went through it today, we have seven to eight manholes we need to raise through town, we find more and more every day, so that's our goal, to get those done this year. Two to three catch spaces that we found, I'm sure there's more that are gonna be raised or replaced. The West Digestor, as you know, we rebuilt the East Digestor last year, we have all the diffusers to replace in the West this year. Received quotes from two different companies, I'm trying to get better pricing on those. Sanitaires kind of locked down which place they wanna go through, because there's different divisions, north, south division on who's can actually sell to us, BL Anderson can't sell to us, but, what is it, BL Anderson, and then there's, and then there's Bergren. Bergren can only sell sanitary products to us, which is what we have in the tanks now. So I'm moving in a different direction through aftermarket, see if we can save some money, see if there's a way that the actual warranty is the same, warranty is very similar, we might go with the aftermarket option, it'll save us some money. This year, we plan on doing a lot more camera work and jet work, just identifying more places, I and I, like I talked about, more future linings, we'll get those done as well. Then the last thing would be, I'm sure I'm missing some things, but our drying beds, as you know, we still have a lot of sludge, and we're working as much as we can to try and get it out. So this year at least, we're going to start redoing some of those, because it's just packed with sludge, place sand, replace stone, so they perform better. Of course, it's all on the mercy of the weather, how well they work, and I can't control that, I wish I could, so I've been working with several companies for a future sludge project, and they're sending in proposals, just like an idea of what it would cost in the future to have a full-time press at the plant, so I can run it as much as we want, we would never fall behind on solids, because the detriment of any plant in the United States is solids handling. If you can't process your solids, you can't get rid of them, your plant deteriorates, so that's why I try to kind of jump the gun, try to get these things rolling, so we can in future time, I talked to Mike about it the other day, we can get something in here, so it's just gonna be a benefit for us. Even submitted a grant, what was it, this last, last month, maybe two months ago, through the state of Ohio, see if we can get some money towards that, so we'll see how that does. That's all I got.
Thank you for your, appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. Fiscal Governor, Cheryl.
As you'll tell, we've been one month into 2024, we have revenue of 516,000, we've spent 717,000, so a good start. Secondly, you have the Union Cemetery cash flow for the year 2023 and their budget for I have a new form for you that's showing all of the donation lines that we have running right now in our financials, and how much we're taking in so far in 2024. We have a current list of revolving loans, and I hard pressed copy is not 450%, 12.5. Forgot the decimal point. Then you have your, the utility report for January as well as the income tax, and the income tax is up 3%, which is really good for January. You have the franchise fee payments from MediaCom from the fourth quarter of 23, and all the financial, the nice, that stuff I need to have these two votes, and the Monty Valley contract. We haven't had a contract, and they asked me if I had a copy of one from way back then and I did not, and neither did they, so this is new, so I sent it to you in a separate email, you can look it up before tonight. You can go with it.
I guess, in a nutshell, why do they weren't paid now, they used to take a percent of, like say a CDVG grant, they would take, take their cut out of that, so they still doing that plus we're paying them?
Plus the money we pay them.
Right. So do you want to, you know, say yes or no, or do you want them, does, to come in and talk to you, or how do you want to handle it?
Let's say no, and then see if Dennis wants to come and talk to us.
Are these hourly rates the standard for the most part, I mean, is what they've charged us in the past, or?
We've had a flat rate.
What made him decide to go with an hourly rate?
I think he needed to come in and talk to us.
Please.
I'll give Dennis a call and see if he can make the next council meeting or vote.
I will.
Make the, not the 12th, the 25th.
No, right, that's a Tuesday, not the Monday prior, so. Any other questions for Cheryl? We've got some notes here real quick. First off, you know, we had talked about seeing if we want to eliminate the partisan seats on council, we talked about that fellow time over the years, to see if we wanna move forward with that, actually reached out to the Board of Elections, it would be, we would not do any primaries for the council seats, they would be, everything would be set to the general election and then tally of the votes, the, which is one seat, you know, one, the top person to, vice versa, kind of thing, so since the last, reaching out to Tanya at the Board of Elections, we'd have to get about 87 signatures from the village, they can be Republican, Democrat, Independent, any party, if we wanna move forward with that, and then present them, Rachel would have to do some paperwork for the Board of Elections to move that forward, to be on the ballot in, in November to go non-partisan council seats, so we've talked about it for years, I think it was a good idea, we would, the primaries anymore, if people are not running for the seats, we encourage people to run, but we wouldn't have to go through any primaries or a general election. So, if you wanna move forward with that, we, we can't as a council, or village employees cannot solicit signatures, we'd have to get outside people to do that, so I've had a couple people I've reached out to, if they wouldn't be able, willing to do that, they said they would, to collect signatures for us, and then it would go to Rachel and back to the Board of Elections to be, our August 7th is the deadline for all the paperwork and the signatures to be on the ballot, so your call.
Does that mean, benefit of saving the village money?
Yeah.
That's right, that's how I understood it exactly.
Yeah, that last primary, just be honest.
12,000 for 14, 12,000, I was told to 15,000, just because three people that were Republicans ran for two spots, and so we had a primary in the league, like it all been a general election and we wouldn't have to pay all that money.
Save a lot of money in different, different things that come along like that, and they do come along frequently.
I'm in favor of it.
I'm in favor.
Me too.
We have an official vote on it, council, no, no vote, just, the people, you know, it's gonna go to the elections, so.
Cause you're not in it.
Right, I know that, I'm just saying, the people have the vote, it's gonna go to the ballot, they wanna have council that way, it's up to them, so.
Do the people that would run for those spots, do they, would they still require to get signatures, or like?
I think they still have to get, you know, I think they still have to get signatures, they just would be not partisan, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause right now with the, with the setup of council with the original, you know, it's, there's no Republican seats or Democrat seats, but you gotta run that way, that.
Let's do it, Mike.
All right, we'll move forward with that then. I'd send everybody, we have a new, well, I didn't know for how long ago, we talked about it, but their OML is having council orientation class, new council members, but I, I'm, I'm gonna go to it, I would like to get refreshed on council procedures and different things like that. There's three meetings in March, one in Athens, Columbus, and then Cleveland, seeing if anybody else wanted to ride along, go together, get it updated, or get an update on council, you know, programs for, for council seats and protocol stuff, so encouraging anyone to, to go to that class, and anyone on those dates. I did get an update here yesterday, an email went out about the Verizon Tower, an American Tower, they were reaching out again, Mark Hornicki had reached out to Jen, can't remember her last name, I had the email, but they're like, what's the holdup? They're getting, we're getting frustrated, it's been a long time, a two-year process, and they're still saying it's in there, it's in their, on their desk, it's not priority anymore, kind of thing, and we're like, you know what, enough's enough, so, talking to Mark with all that stuff, and Erica was part of the email, and we're to the point of, if we're gonna move further, we'll have to go to litigation on them, I mean, to move them quicker, or are we just gonna sit there?
Let's do it.
But I think we'd be able to do diligence to, it's a simple, simple move, and they even said it was a simple move, I think Verizon was okay with it, but the other parties were kind of holding it up, but.
We're messing around and lose out on an awfully big, a big chance, this bill.
Yeah. Erica had said she had some, two different parties kind of reached out and said if they had a facility available, they were kind of wanting to move on something, but that was a year or so ago, so. None of the property has been moved over to Keller, you know, he doesn't have any of the property, he had to get this taken care of, or we were moving in any farther with moving the property into his possession, so, but I'm glad he kind of reached out to him again, they got some movement on it, but they didn't say it was a priority anymore.
Let's, let's do whatever we have to do.
And I don't know if Rachel's role, up to date with that, Troy worked on it several times with Mark Hornicki, but I can get you the information of where we stand.
I gave me, Troy gave me a copy of, I guess it was the contractor, something that he had in his possession regarding that, I just haven't had a chance to look over it yet, but.
So we probably had to get back with Mark on it.
Yeah.
Move a direction on that, so we will talk to him on that.
Rachel, do you have an actual copy of these, but does anybody have one?
I'll have to check, Troy gave me a big envelope of stuff regarding it, but I will look at it and see what's in there.
I'd have to check, Troy gave me a vague amount of stuff regarding it, but I will look at it and see what's in there.
Sorry, that, we did have a proclamation, I won't read the whole thing, but every February, the Four County Career Service has a luncheon, the students get to show off their designs, their classes, their projects within the Four County School, and it's, it's a nice program, I had an opportunity to go last year, but they call February the Career Technical Education Month, it's a nice school, they do a lot of nice stuff for our kids, with some direction, with job opportunities, and state finding their interest in certain fields, but the proclamation, and they got a Friday luncheon, but I take this over and I'll have it signed off on, but, you know, Hicksville recognizes the month of February as Career Technical Education Month, so we'll go ahead and go to that meeting. I don't know if I had anything else.
Mike, backing up to the seminar you were talking about, I was just reading this again, and payment deadline for, I think, the one that we were talking about going to in Columbus, payment deadline's February twenty-third.
Yeah.
So we might wanna make a decision pretty quickly on.
Right, anybody, yeah.
What we're gonna do.
We talked about maybe going down to the Columbus.
Athens is just too far.
Right.
Five hours in the cars, ideal.
We were thinking, if anybody did want, we talked about maybe going down to Columbus one, and carpooling down, so. If anybody else wants to go, you're more welcome to, let me know, or let Cheryl know, and Columbus is, what, three hours, Cleveland's the last one, I think, in the month, a little bit farther, but twenty-third, so, let us know quickly. Anything else for the council?
I make a motion, we go into executive session to discuss, what?
Personnel.
Personnel and something else.
K-9?
That's their personnel addition.
Additional personnel.
Yeah, additional personnel, it's personnel to mark additional personnel.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Bassett?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.